We are recording.
Okay, thank you. This is the City of Boulder Planning Board meeting of June 23rd, 2022. And I would like to call the meeting to order and Cindy will begin with general instructions about how we operate.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Welcome to Planning Board Meeting. We're also glad that you could be here with us. As always, we always aim that these meetings are respectful and orderly. As such, we have some just some specific protocol for the meeting. I'm going to briefly share my screen. I'm going to try. Thank you. The city has engaged with the community members to co-create a vision of productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. The vision supports physical and emotional safety for all community members, staff, and board members, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, experiences, and political beliefs. If you would like to see more about this vision, you can go to our webpage, bouldercolorado.gov, and type in the search button, participate in city council meetings, and/or I can send you this link at any time. On the following are examples of rules of decorum found in our Boulder Vice Code. These will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. obscenity, dehumanizing language, racial epithets, and other like, excuse me, other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impede the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. And participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by, or we will ask, especially when you start to speak during a public hearing comment, that you give your full name and at least if not your address, a location of where you live. Since we are in a Zoom webinar, if, when we get to the public hearing comment, we'll ask that you go down to raise your hand. We ask that you go down to the bottom where you can hover over your toolbar at the bottom and you'll see a raised hand. And you can click that and then I will see that and I will know that you would like to speak. And then we will go over the protocol for speaking when we get to that point during our meeting. I never shared my screen, did I?
I'm so sorry. We remember.
I never, I always forget to hit that last button. I'm so sorry. I'm going to turn it back over to you, John.
Thank you. And your verbal presentation was terrific. Okay. So the, the first thing we have to do according to the agenda now is to deal with the minutes of June 16th, which was our previous meeting. And before we do that, I would like to check with Hella, a question, a process question. Since that meeting was continued, this is this tonight's meeting is a continuation of that meeting. I'm just wondering, do we, is it appropriate for us to have separate minutes for that previous meeting and this meeting, or should they be combined?
Yeah, I think they could be separate and the meeting minutes are probably for all the items that were on the agenda that night. And there'd be additional minutes for the item that was continued for what you do with that tonight. I think that's fine.
Okay, just want to clear that up. Thank you. Okay. I, I think that maybe Laura had some comments to the minutes if I understood correctly. Is that, is that the case, or do you have any concerns about these minutes as, as presented here?
I don't have any concerns about the minutes. The question that I had for Hella in our email exchange prior to the meeting, which was copied to the planning board but was, nobody else replied to, it was not a serial meeting. That was about the staff's denial findings, which is separate from the minutes. So I did give Cindy some minor track changes to clarify my remarks in the minutes, but those are included in the packet and I'm fine with what's in the packet now.
Okay, thank you. So do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I will move to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Very good. A second?
I'll second.
Okay. Take a vote. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Okay, that's a unanimous approval. Thank you. So we'll move on to, to the next portion of our meeting, which is a public participation. And this is the time when anybody may address the planning board on any issue except that which we are dealing with tonight as a continuation of our public hearing that began in our last meeting on June 16th. Do we have any, anyone who wishes to address the planning board?
We do have a raised hand. And again, this is not the time to speak about raising canes, just as a reminder. Okay, our hand went down because I thought that that's what that would be. But if anyone else has something they would like to speak about in general, besides raising canes, please raise your hand and we will give you three minutes for the floor.
Okay, I'd like to note that we ask of those who address us on any specific issue to let us know if they have any personal relationship with what they're addressing. That is to say, any financial relationship or family relationship or social or physical, in the sense of being a neighbor of what they're talking about. That's just so we can be clear about what the specific interests might be of whoever is talking to us. So.
I have a question.
Yes.
I thought I saw in the packet that we are not having public comment on raising canes tonight. So I wanted to ask Hella if that's, if that's the case, then can people who want to comment on raising canes comment now?
Um, yeah, I think the, the public hearing on that item has been closed. So there shouldn't be any evidence presented on that because the public hearing is closed. I do know that the applicant would like to make a, may like to make a request to the board so that maybe the hand that was raised and I, I would recommend that you hear that request and if there is one, when the item comes up and then you can address it as you wish. Does that make sense?
Thank you, Hella.
Thank you.
Don't see any hands going up, John.
Okay, we'll move right ahead.
Okay.
I'll bring the public participation section of this meeting to a close. And we'll move ahead into discussion of dispositions and thoughts.
I'm sorry, I handed just raised as soon as, I'm not sure if you want to open it back up again.
Okay, well, let's, let's open it up and, and hear what this person has to say.
Okay, Lynn Segal, sorry about that. We, I saw your hand go up just as we closed that. So thank you for your patience. I'm going to unmute you. And as soon as you begin speaking, I will begin the three minute timer. You all right?
I'm squeezing you to find out who else is at this meeting. I never know who's at this meeting. Just me. I'm the only one. I'm the only one listening in. It's so remarkable. You know, it's just like television, which I haven't watched for 20 years. You don't know who's watching. But this is a public city meeting and it should be more open to the community and the community should know who the heck they are, which I don't, I don't have a clue. So I always wait until the last minute and I'm sorry I was not quick enough for you guys. Sorry about that. Um, yeah, I don't know what raising cane about raising cane, but I hadn't followed that one. But, um, let's see. This is what I want an answer from you about. I seriously want an answer. And that means you too, Laura, because you're new doesn't mean you don't have to research the past. And that is, what happened with Fruhaus? What the heck happened with Fruhaus, the affordable housing component of 311 Mapleton? That was so hotly debated. Seven city subsidies. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
Seven, seven of them. One of them was like 300 parking spaces at 311 and a whole nine for Fruhaus for the affordable housing for car share. How is it that Fruhaus disappeared? They're doing cash and loo. What the hey? What happened? I want to know. I seriously want to hear from you folks. What happened? Am I, is my imagination going wild? Fruhaus changed hands, right? Something happened. You know, people want to talk, but you can't interact. It's like talking to a wall. And you never hear back. This is not community engagement. This is, this is like, you know, it's so formal in the city. And it's so progressive. And it so goes nowhere as a result. And so we still decades after decades after decades have the same and much, much worse problems all the time, like affordable housing, which is what you're going to have to do at Alpine-Bolson, the Marpa House alternative, which unfortunately Sarah was a split vote on and allowed Marpa House to disappear. Marpa House was the best housing probably in the United States for communal housing because it's not really regimented. You don't have these like exotic meetings all the time. You just have like a really kind of Buddhist community. It doesn't have to be Buddhist because these are Buddhist theories and Buddhist, you know, principles that are underlied. And I wanted to bring up also the restaurant bathroom, which costs $6 million. And the homeless ripped the toilets out of it right by the courthouse. Unbelievable. The way the city's spending money. Done.
Thank you. Okay, were there any other folks who wanted to speak? I don't see any hands raised here. You, Cindy?
I do not see another hands, John.
John?
Okay.
John?
Yes. Yeah, Mark?
I just had a procedural question based on some of Lynn's comments that I've been wanting to ask and I keep forgetting to ask. Lynn has joined our meeting, not as a panelist, but just as a participant. Is that correct, Cindy?
Yes.
And as a participant, I, I'm looking at my screen and whether it's on my desktop or my iPad, I have a icon that says Participants 22. Does Lynn have that same participant list? She does not. So a participant can't, cannot see the participants of the meeting.
Attendee. So this is a, this is a Zoom webinar. It's not a Zoom meeting. Zoom webinars are different and planning board, we set up our meetings. Just a very short story. We set up our meetings as webinars, just like council does because we have experienced Zoom bombers, bombers. And, and so we set up ours like webinars and there's a lot more protection. So we don't have interference. And when you have a webinar, we have panelists and attendees. And I, as the host, can promote people who are staff, board members, you know, potential applicants that are going to speak to be panelists. They have the ability to turn on their video. They can mute and unmute themselves. Attendees are, are the public that are, are watching the meeting. And then as a host, I, if they raise their hand and they want to speak, then I give them the ability to, then I unmute them.
Right. But, but my, my main question is, as an attendee, Lynn cannot see who else is participating in the meeting?
Unfortunately, no. No, I, I research, go ahead.
I was going to say is when I attended planning board meetings as an attendee, I could see the screen like I'm seeing it now. I mean, I couldn't see myself, but I could see all the people that were there. I could see the planning board and I could see the city of Boulder until they came up. So that information is so far as who is, who are we speaking to the planning board?
Right.
Is available.
Those are the panelists. Those are the panelists. But she's, I think what Lynn is referring to is she can't see the attendees. Like, like if she were sitting in chambers, she can't see the audience.
Right.
Yeah.
But she can see us. Yeah.
Right. Um, okay. And, and the next question, and Lynn has, has brought up some excellent points for me at times. And I do remember the 311 Mapleton and its relation to the Fruhaus site. And this is a question for staff. And it doesn't have to be answered tonight, but I have, I have two questions. And, and it relates a little bit to some of the email correspondence in regard to the 3030 whatever Arapaho annexation agreement. And that is the city manager's ability to change an agreement in regard to meeting the affordable housing, inclusionary housing requirement. My question is, who made the decision for the applicant to unlink 311 Mapleton from the Freihoff site? And, and was it the city manager? And since it is now cash and loo rather than a building at the Freihoff site to meet the inclusionary housing requirement, what was the amount of cash and loo that was paid to the city for the inclusionary housing requirement for the 311 Mapleton project? So those are my two questions.
Thanks for the questions, Mark. If you would be able to put those questions in the form of an email, send them to myself and Kurt Fernheber, we'd be happy to provide a detailed response for it.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll do that.
You bet.
Okay, that's it for me.
All right, Mel?
I have a big of a follow up to what Mark is talking about. I am wondering if the kind of the essence is how can or it appears that the ability for decisions that are made at planning board and maybe even city council to become malleable as projects proceed is leaving us with results that we didn't intend or that boards didn't intend. And I know that we deliberated on this, on the annexation there on Arapaho to get that language in there, that there was a non-negotiable part to the drafting of the actual or the negotiating of the actual annexation in that case. And I guess I'm, I'm thinking that that's maybe what Mark is wondering about is, is we make decisions and we think, you know, we're doing right by the project. And, and then it gets, and I don't know, it's not really a question. I think it's maybe a clarification that we're interested in making sure that especially around the affordable housing component, that we don't agree to something that can then be undermined at a future event. And I don't, I don't know how we fix that, but it's something that I think we're aware of.
These issues I think are absolutely valid. And I think the proper time to talk about them is under the matters portion of our meeting, which will hopefully come up shortly. But we'll, we'll see. I, but I think it would be good for us right now to stick to the agenda process. And those are, those are excellent points. And I think we need to talk about them, but let's talk about them in the right, at the right time. So if that's okay with you, I'll, I'll suggest that we move on to our discussion of dispositions and call ups. We have two of them tonight. One of them is a final replat, final plat for the Holiday Inn Express Hotel site at 3365 Diagonal Highway. And the other is a minor site, well, the Minor Site Review Amendment for the 2745 Mapleton Address Grant Car Company. Do either, do any of you have questions or wish to call either of these up? I, I have two questions for staff on, on one, on, on them. For the first one, the Holiday Inn Express Hotel site. Is this, I was a member of Planning Board when this was being considered way back when. Is this in line with the project that was considered by Planning Board at that point?
Yeah, if memory serves me, John, and thanks for the question. And Elaine will, will check my memory if I'm wrong. I think it was actually a condition of approval of the site review that you guys approved. So this just really implements the site review that was approved by the board.
Okay, thank you. And so I'll, I'll ask, take a first check if anyone wants to call this item up. I, I do not. Okay, I see a lot of shaking heads. So that one, we will not call up. The, the other question is for the 2745 Mapleton site. And I wanted to ask if the car wash facility that's being proposed there will be linked into the city sewer system so that the wastewater is being properly dealt with?
Yeah, the, at the time of technical document review and building permit, our, our staff plans or viewers are made sure that it's compliant with all of our industrial pre-treatment requirements for these types of use.
Okay, so, so that the concern that was raised by one member of the public about runoff into, I guess that's Goose Creek there. Goose Creek is, is, is not issue in this project.
No, that wouldn't be a concern. They'll, they'll be required to meet all of our industrial pre-treatment standards, you know, for these sorts of uses. So the discharge will be reviewed by our engineering staff.
Okay, thank you. I, I do not wish to call this up then. Anybody else with questions? Okay, I see that no one wants to call it up. So so we won't be calling that up and we can move ahead to the next item, which is a continuation of our used review application for the raising cane proposal at 3033 28th Street. So there'll be no public comment at this point. But Hella has indicated that the applicant may wish to make a statement before we continue this. And this would be the right time for that.
Is there going to be a visual presentation that I, at all?
No, there is not. So Lou Erin Foster with Raising Cane's. We have reviewed the, the draft denial findings and would like to have an opportunity to address those and therefore asking for continuance.
Pardon, what did you ask me for?
For a continuance. An additional continuance.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to check with our legal counsel to see what sort of process and legal issues might be involved here.
Yeah, I, I looked at the court's procedure, the planning board's procedural rules and they anticipate requests for continuances prior to the board taking up an item for discussion or requests by an applicant prior to the board taking up an item for discussion. They're silent as to requests like this after the board has started its consideration. I think you could move to continue and entertain the applicant's proposal, but it is in your discretion. You don't have to. You've heard presentations, held a public hearing and have discussed the matter and could also decide to move forward and take action on it. And the applicant would have the option to file a new application that is different from what was previously proposed.
Okay, let's, I think we'll, we'll talk about that. But just to clarify with the applicant, for how long are you seeking a continuance?
Well, I believe I understand that the July dates have been canceled because of the holidays. So I suppose the August one. If I have my information correct.
Okay, thank you. I think we'll consider it now. I'd invite my colleagues on planning board to give us their opinions. Yeah, Laura?
I'd like to ask a question of Hella, just so we understand. If we, what is the difference for the applicant of whether we go ahead with the finding of denial and they have to resubmit if they want to have a new design versus a continuance? What's the difference for the applicant and what's the difference for the planning board?
Um, I guess they, the, the applicant would have to file a new application with a new application fee. There would be a review by staff as usually happens. And then it would be scheduled. Well, either there could be a staff decision with a call up or the application could be referred to the planning board for another hearing. So the whole process would start over. If you entertained a continuance, some of the things to consider would be, I guess you don't know at this point in time, what, what kind of changes would be proposed? Is it essentially the same application? If not, you, you would have to think about whether you should at that point in time open another public hearing as part of this application because the public wasn't able to speak to it. Or if it's more or less the same application that people had a chance to speak to and for finds what was proposed based on planning board comments and would be more akin to imposing conditions of approval to implement what may have been proposed by the applicant. Does that help?
It does help. And that filing fee, is that substantial? I imagine it's not substantial for a project of this magnitude, but.
Charts may be better able to answer that question. And then one of the things to consider for you would be whether you think that any change to the plan could result in a different outcome for you, right? And any change to the proposal.
Laura, I'm sorry, would you be able to repeat your question? I'm experiencing glitchy internet this evening.
I'm sorry to hear that. We all hate tech issues. Sorry you're having to deal with that. The filing fee, if we did close out this application and the applicant had to submit a new one, I guess my question is in terms of the impact to the applicant in terms of the filing fee, is that substantial? And would it create a substantial delay for the applicant? Like, would they then go to the back of the line or something like that?
Yeah, the fee for used review is a couple thousand dollars. I forget the exact price tag, but I can look it up here pretty quickly. The process ostensibly just begins anew. So they would have to get into our submittal queue. We're experiencing a bit of a backlog in applications right now. So it really is kind of starting from square one once again with staff submitting a new application.
And do you have a sense of when, you know, the, the amount of delay that that would create for the applicant? Are we talking about a couple of months, a year, a couple of years?
Um, to get in the process is probably a month, just based on our backlog right now. And then the review typically takes about 90 days, but it really just depends on the quality of their initial submittal. You know, and how, how much change is being proposed from the initial submittal to the subsequent submittal? So it kind of depends.
Okay, so it sounds like the impact is a couple thousand dollars, which I'm sure for raising canes is not that significant. And a few months, which might be more of a hardship, but it's not a matter of years. It's a matter of months.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mark, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thanks, John. And Laura, thank you for your questions because those are essentially the questions I, I had. So I am going to take the position and I don't want this to seem like I have a prejudice against the applicant or anything, but I, I, I'm going to take the position that if a continuance yields minor changes that don't require a, a new public hearing and new real in-depth consideration by the planning board, then most likely it's not enough. And if the changes are enough. And if the changes are enough, significant enough to have any real chance of changing our position on the denial, then those changes are significant enough that it it needs to go back through the process, through a public hearing and through review. So I I don't, I I understand the applicant's desire for a continuance, a desire to address the the findings in our denial, but I I am, I I just believe that if if our denial is is in depth, it's serious and would require, for me, would require significant changes. Hence, it should it should go back through the process and get a new hearing and a new review.
Okay, Laura?
I think that's well said. I agree with everything that my fellow Planning Board member Mark just said. And I will add that I I think it will require major major changes to have a a site design that we would approve. I'm not, like, I don't understand how you would revise the drive-through, but if you proposed a restaurant that didn't have a drive-through, that could be more in line with an appropriate use for that site. You might have to rearrange. If you want to have a drive-through, rearrange which curb cuts you close and which ones you keep open, because that one on Belmont is just doesn't meet code, like the letter of the law. So I think it would require major changes. I think I would love to have staff take another look at it in depth. I also want to say that I think that our denial findings need to go on the record. And right now, those denial findings are not adopted by Planning Board. And I think they need to be seriously considered as part of the record. So I would be in favor of moving forward with the denial, and we would welcome the applicant to come back with a substantially different proposal.
Okay, well said. ML, what are your thoughts?
Thank you, John. I concur with both Mark and and Laura. I don't see how a continuance can get us to meeting the current state of denial. I I I just agree with that and I think we had a pretty in-depth conversation and deliberation at our last meeting. And I yeah, I can't find it in myself to to see how small changes that would trigger another public hearing would change in. So I'm inclined to support the motion to deny as it's been as it's been assembled for this meeting.
Okay. Hello, it looks like you're about ready to say something. Is, do I interpret your facial expressions correctly?
No, I wasn't going to say anything. I was just ready to answer questions.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll I'll throw in my two bits worth, and that is that I agree with my colleagues. I think that any change that would be significant enough to change our thoughts about this project would be so significant that a a full new public review should be undertaken. So so I agree with with, I think, all four of all all of us here. So in that case, I think we should move ahead with with our plan for this evening.
Can I make a motion?
Can I just check in with staff real quick?
Sure, Laura?
John, this is what you asked about at the beginning of the meeting of including, I had made a couple of comments on the findings of denial. There were a couple of points in particular that weren't in the initial draft that I had asked to be included, and I don't know if staff have had a chance to work on that or if we need to work on that here tonight. I see Shabnam is coming online. Hi, Shabnam.
Hi, Laura. So we did have some time to work on and edit those changes that you brought up. I can share the the edited version for everyone to read this time.
I'm in favor. What do you think, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I think now's the time for us to look at the you have there.
Job, I just need to make your co-host really quickly.
Okay.
You should have the capability now.
Are you seeing my screen, the word document?
Yes, thank you.
So this was under the circulation section criteria two. And these are the changes.
Thank you. I I did want to have on the record, I think that the idea of making an illegal U-turn into the site was was just not correct, because there would be the raised median would be extended to prevent that. It wasn't so much the question of an illegal left turn that I was worried about as people spotting the restaurant, making a quick U-turn, and then again, a quick right without carefully checking for pedestrians. So I think that's the first change that was done there, where illegal was crossed off, illegal left turn, and it was changed to U-turn and then right turn. And then the other concern I brought up was the visibility issues caused by the juxtaposition of the screening wall right there where a long line of cars may be exiting and impairing visibility for for motorists who are checking for the pedestrians and cyclists that may be approaching pretty quickly from the south on that multi-use path. It just seems to me like a recipe for accidents to have the exit to the drive-through be right there where people are leaving a blind spot, turning, and then trying to see down the multi-use path as they're crossing it. That just seems like a bad design. And that's one of the reasons why I'm not sure that a drive-through works if it's right up adjacent to twenty eighth street, where you have to have that screening wall by code, that three to five foot screening wall by code. So and I think that what I'm seeing here, the end of that paragraph covers that concern. So I wanted that into the denial conditions as well, because I think a new proposal that retains that that coincidence of the screening wall and the exit on twenty eighth street would continue to trigger my concern, and I wanted that to be clear for the applicant. So thank you, Shabnam, for making those two two changes.
Okay. How how do my colleagues on the Planning Board feel about that? You, first of all, you can see what what staff has written, and then you can also comment on what Laura has has requested here. Mark?
I find the changes to be fine and appreciate their inclusion in the denial findings.
Okay.
Thank you. I I agree, and I appreciate. So my question is, is what we're seeing here in the motion pack that we are looking at, is is it in the reference that we are making with this motion?
My recommendation would be the motion language that's in the packet. If you could add at the end as those findings were revised during the June twenty third meeting, that would be great to make it very what was originally in the packet has been changed a little bit.
Right.
Okay. Let's see, has everyone spoken up? Laura, what do you think?
I have read staff's denial findings, and I think that they very well capture the discussion of the Planning Board members. I appreciate the edits. And so I think that with, you know, what Hella has suggested, adding to the suggested motion language, including the changes that were made at this meeting, I think that that is something I could very well support.
Okay, thank you. I I agree with my colleagues here. So I think that that everyone having spoken their piece, I would invite somebody to make a motion here.
Hello, has a question.
I I think there may have been one small other change that I saw track. Shabnam, if you could scroll, it may just have been clearer.
Oh, yeah, it was just a spelling.
Okay, I just wanted you to be aware of.
Okay. Okay, yeah. All right.
So am I am I correct to assume that we would expect if the applicant comes back with a new proposal that we would be comparing it against these findings to at our next meeting, that these would be brought back around to us?
I think a new proposal would be reviewed against the review criteria not against these findings.
Okay. But but they can expect that we would have the same concerns.
Yes, I'm I'm sure they would consider your previous comments.
And and I think that it would be reasonable if if there was a request from any Planning Board member to have these findings presented at that point that they would be made available.
Sounds good. Thank you, Hella and John.
Okay. So is anyone willing to make a motion here?
Yeah, I'll take a stab at at getting this to include these two. I don't know if it called amendments or changes, but okay, I'll start. Motion to deny use review application number L U R twenty twenty dash zero 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 six one and parking reduction application A D R twenty twenty two dash zero 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 six two. Finding that the applicant has failed to demonstrate that the applications meet the review criteria and adopting the denial findings of fact to include the changes made at the Planning Board meeting six twenty three twenty twenty two. And prepared for the Planning Board's June twenty third consideration of these applications. Did that capture everything that was necessary, Hella?
I think it did. I would recommend that you flip the language around it, the language that you added. Maybe we could add that at the very end of the motion language. So and adopting the denial findings of fact prepared for the pinning boards, June twenty third consideration of these applications as revised by the board during the June twenty third meeting.
Twenty third or twenty sixth?
Twenty third, today.
Oh, twenty third.
So, ML, is is that is that the way you intend to?
I think that is what we we need to make sure that our motion captures what was done today, yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I I just want to again emphasize that we would absolutely welcome the applicants to return to us with a new proposal that takes these denial findings into account. It's really nothing personal. It's just concerns about the design, and we would love to welcome you to our community. And so that that is a remark I wanted to get into the record.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I think now if I understand correctly, I should reread the motion to make sure that everyone understands it before we take the vote. Motion to, so we're going to take a vote on the following motion. To deny use review for application number L U R twenty twenty dash zero 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 six one and parking reduction application A D R twenty twenty two dash zero 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 six two. Finding that the applicant has failed to demonstrate that the applications meet the review criteria and adopting the denial findings of fact prepared for Planning Board's June twenty third consideration of these applications as revised by the board during the June twenty, during the June twenty third twenty twenty two, and I think it should say meeting.
Meeting.
Okay. I presume we need to take a a roll call. Oh, Hella has your hand up there.
I think we're still missing a second to the motion.
No, I, no, we, Marcus.
Perfect.
Okay, I think we need to do a roll call vote here. So I'll call your names and you can you can give your vote. Mark?
Aye.
ML?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
And John, I vote aye. So that concludes this portion of our meeting.
Can I can I say something, please?
Sure.
Um, I would like to just kind of follow up on what Laura said that these, this motion really has to do with with trying to meet the policies and to accommodate the concerns that the neighborhood and that the Boulder Valley Comp Plan puts on the table for us. So I, it it is not, this is, this is very much about the findings. And it has nothing to do with, it's not a personal thing, and it's not a don't come back. We would, I think if this is what we, what the owners want to do on this property, just meet the requirements and think about the impact, the real impact that it has to to the to the to the context. And we'd be happy to have a look at and propose.
I too. Mark?
Um. I just wanted to take a minute and I I watched our last meeting, the continuation of that this meeting is a continuation of. And I just wanted to acknowledge to staff that one could perceive some of my comments about this application as being harsh. And I want to acknowledge staff's efforts and and their role in facilitating, their their job is to facilitate and help an applicant, and that that's that's a perfectly great role, and it's a, it's an honorable role. And any comments I had were about the application and not about staff's efforts. And so I just, I just really want staff to know that I appreciate the hard work that went into this application and for them to understand that, again, judgment on this is not judgment on an application is not judgment on anything other than the application. And I have an appreciation for the job performance. I also want to say that this is my first experience with a denial, and I didn't understand the the idea of a denial motion that would in would be as this extensive, but I think the community benefits from the kind of extensive denial motion that was drawn up. I think the applicants benefit from it, and I know I certainly am appreciative of of my thoughts and comments being included and distilled down into the denial motion. So I I'm appreciative of the work that went into that, and I think the community benefits from that. So I I have thanks to staff on on both counts.
Okay, thank you. All right, if that concludes our efforts on this matter for the time being, I wouldn't be surprised if we wind up seeing a new application sometime soon. But thank you for coming and letting us know your thoughts. Applicant. Okay, thank you. Now we move into the matters from Planning Board, Planning Director, Staff, City Attorney. We're making rapid progress here, so congratulations. Charles, any?
Items? No matters from staff, although I did follow up with Maro Zagoras and she's just waiting for us to determine a date for the retreat. And she'll be happy to work with us.
Okay, that's that's excellent. And I was chatting with Cindy before I understand Amanda, who has just joined us here. Maybe sending out a little calendar poll soon. Is that correct?
Yes, you will. And one thing that we kind of realized is. We wanted to wait till after the recess, right? Because I don't think I ever really heard and I probably just missed it in the last meeting, but we want to wait to to schedule it after the recess, correct?
After the recess, please.
Okay, that's that's my understanding.
But as soon as possible after the recess.
That's correct.
Okay, so Amanda is going to be sending that out since I'm going to be departing. And so we thought it would be best if she sent it out. And. We I think we were going to focus Amanda on the send that just a broad three weeks. Span right after recess. Or I think maybe we were looking at maybe a week before the recess ended. I can't remember what we talked about. We'll talk about tomorrow.
We we did talk about that, but I think after after recess is where we wound up.
Yeah, I think based on people's travel plans, Cindy.
Okay. Great.
Very good. And I see Brad Mueller has joined us. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Wisdom here. Yeah, thank you, Chair Gressel. I wanted to introduce myself and say thank you for the warm welcome that. Staff has given me and those in the community that I've already interacted with and. Chair Gressel and I had a chance to to meet already and. Was excited to begin to to get to know him and to learn about the planning commission and. And the vast history of knowledge that that he has as as a great. Community over the years. I just.
The first time I've ever been described as somebody exciting to me. So, thank you.
Well, I I won't spend a lot of time because I know you've already invested a good amount in this meeting tonight, but I just real briefly about myself. I am a Colorado native. I. I have worked most recently up in Greeley in a similar role, but I've also worked for Weld County and Douglas County. Was super privileged to work in Douglas County under Ed Teppe's mentorship. Ed Teppe was county, Boulder County Planning Director during some of those. Heady days of developing open space policies and some of these things that are. Are just treasures for the area and for for the city. And it's a bit of a homecoming for me too, because I went to see you as a undergraduate and met my wife here and got married in Boulder. So it's it's really. Great to to kind of circle back home in that sense as well. I want to say thank you to all of you for your public service. One of the things that I. Appreciate about staff and appointed and elected officials is their spirit of public service. I personally think that's an honorable calling and appreciate what you're doing for the community in that regard. As I do appreciate everything that staff and council and other boards are doing as well. It gets just exciting work to do and I'm privileged to be part of it and be part of it here in Boulder. I do hope to meet with each of you individually or at least have a phone conversation. I want to respect your calendars and schedules and such, but. Hope to be able to connect with you one on one over the next couple of months and just get to know you as people a little bit and. Give you a chance to answer any questions you might have about me. But thank you for the introduction. So happy to be here.
Oh, thank you.
Very nice to meet you.
Yeah, I can then encourage you all to take Brad up on that offer. It'll be worthwhile for you, so.
We're all exciting people to meet. You're gonna love us.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. I'm looking, I'm very excited that we have a leader.
Yes. And I would I would like to like that phone call and I'm available. So that'd be great. We'll work on.
Okay, well, thank you.
And John, I think for some of us, this is our first time meeting Amanda as well. Is Amanda our new secretary?
Oh, right. Yeah, yeah. You better introduce yourself as well.
Yeah, hello, everyone. My name is Amanda Cusworth. I'm a supervisor in planning and development services and so. I am working to replace Cindy's position. Cindy is tough to replace, but. I might be with you. You might see me in July and August, depending on how all of that goes and serving in that role in the interim.
So you're not our permanent person. You are going to try to find a permanent person.
Going to do my best to find Cindy.
Cindy is irreplaceable, but you might find somebody who is also kind of cool. Thank you, Amanda.
Yeah, thank you. Good to meet you.
You as well. And I will send out a poll for retreat dates.
Okay, thank you. I can also mention just last night I met the new comprehensive planning manager that's been hired. We we haven't, he hasn't come to to us yet, but I'm hoping that we get to meet him sometime soon. So I don't know when that'll work for. For the scheduling purposes, but he's a key guy for us as well.
Yeah, he'll be before the board when we bring the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan back next month. So I have an interface. You guys will have an opportunity to interface with them then.
Very good. Okay. All right. Any other matters from staff? Okay, any matters from the board? Mark.
Um, this is not on Grand View. This is on the Design Advisory Board and I I. Intended to do this at our last meeting and we had better attendance, but. The meeting went long, etc. So I just wanted to report that I attended my first Design Advisory Board meeting. And the the sole agenda item, well. The the primary agenda item for that meeting was their review and input on the site review criteria. And so they managed to hold that hold that meeting to about. An hour and a half that topic. So they 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 did better than us. I re I did my best to report planning boards. Disparate views on on the site review criteria in a concise way. And. I I can I can report two things. It seemed as though the at least the more vocal participants in on DAB. Were in agreement with the concept that the site review criteria. As as presented was too prescriptive and they were, you know. Interested in editing and changing shall to should or could, etc., and in a number of instances. And and I I again, I tried to be careful when I voiced a planning board view or summary. And my own, I did voice one or two things just on my own. But the the big takeaway was they said, Mark, go back to planning board and let them know we're we're really interested in redoing more projects. A little earlier and and we really feel like we can do some good. And so that's a message I wanted to bring to us and it made me harken back to the. Concept review we did on the, I can't remember the company's name, but anyway, on the East Pearl. Just west of Foothills Parkway, the the lab site and our decision not to send that to DAB. And again, I think that was based on some concern for the applicant and expenditure. But I just wanted to us to say that we need to take into account that. The DAB has a bunch of very enthusiastic people with some great skills and they would welcome an opportunity to weigh in on. On anything we want to send their way. So that's my DAB summary.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I can I can vouch for that. I was pre the previous lay us on to DAB and they are eager to. To get something to review, so. I agree. I I think we should be taking advantage of them for that. Okay, any other matters? I I have a couple of things to report. I I'm the they us on to the Housing Advisory Board, which met last and last month, I guess. And they are eager to send messages both to planning board and to city council. Regarding moving ahead with the TVAP two project as well as planning reserve. Activity and they. There's a number of of new members on it who are not very familiar either with those projects or. City processes. So I took the opportunity to outline to them some of the differences that those two. Projects will involve. And it was a, they're an enthusiastic group, so so that was fun. And just for your information, they are getting together in a little social unofficial non-meeting capacity on Monday evening to. Have a few beers and I'm sure that if any of you are interested in chatting with them about things, that would be a. Good opportunity to do it. And that's on Monday night. And if anyone's interested, I can give them the details of when and where. The other thing I I just wanted to mention was that at the at staff's request, I showed up at city council. Last. Last Tuesday, where where it was on the consent agenda, the adoption of the of the new. Guidelines and and regulations that just described in DAB. And city council had no questions about it. So that's. I I said that planning board had adopted unanimously agreed that they should embed.
John, was that the the revision to the use tables or was that the site review criteria that Mark was talking about?
No, the use tables.
The use tables. Okay.
Yeah. And although I tried to say something nice about staff, but it may have not come out correctly. So I. I'm hoping that staff didn't get all offended by it.
Well, we'll take we'll take all compliments in all forms, John. And you did a great job summarizing. We really appreciated you being there.
Well, I can say my wife mocked me when when she.
Well, that is certainly punishment enough.
Yeah, it was it was uncomfortable breakfast. So anyway, I didn't. Either it came out wrong or it was reported wrong.
It was just fine.
Okay. Okay, let's see. And yeah, we had our our brief, you heard the brief discussion about our upcoming retreat. You'll be. A poll on when that should happen. Any.
Did we decide? Along with the retreat, did we decide that? We're going to focus. The retreat on. Time with the consultant because that's.
That's.
Intent and then do other things in a. In a structured way under matters. Is that what? It seems like we made some kind of.
Yes, we.
Remember Cindy, you're nodding.
We we did decide that. And there's also the option for another half day retreat. Deal substance if if we so decide appropriate. And I think that decision can be made at the first retreat. Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is this a record for the shortest planning board meeting ever?
I know, let's ask Cindy.
No, you know, almost in my seventeen years, it's not. It's close, though.
We'll keep trying.
Yeah, keep trying.
A good a good goal. I like that.
Keep putting things on the agenda that makes. Okay. Well, this is our last meeting before before our recess. And also our last chance to say goodbye to Cindy again.
At your last Thursday meeting.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure you'll get lots of reminders.
We're all.
Yeah, that's. That'll be important, yeah.
Cindy, you are keeping us in line right up until the moment you walk out the door. Thank you so much.
To the bitter end.
It's bittersweet. We're happy for you. We're sad to lose you, but we're happy for your new opportunities.
Thank you. You know, it's bittersweet for me too. You know, I'm excited, but I'm I'm gonna miss this. It's it's. It's it's hard. It's hard.
Well, you're welcome to come hang out with us any Tuesday that we have a meeting.
Any Tuesday.
And when we do have our party, you are definitely on the invite list.
Okay, right. Right.
So, Hella, are there any matters from the city attorney?
Nothing really for me, but I'll remind you that there may be call ups that come through during your recess. So. Check your emails regularly and as you all know, one board member can call up an application. With an email to the city manager and to the board. So if you want to call something up.
Um, can I can I ask? I was wondering about that. So. Call ups will continue. To happen because. There is a certain amount of time after it's in a process that has a time. Time frame.
There's a fourteen day, there's a fourteen day call up, ML, and we're going to really try to not transmit any call ups to you guys, but I think that there may be one. That will have to transmit during the recess, but we're going to try to minimize the amount of, you know, board activity that. Occurs over the recess, but there's a fourteen day period by where the board has the opportunity to call something up. So. If anybody's interested, just let us know via email that you're interested in having a hearing on it and we'll make sure to get it scheduled. But we are going to really try not to transmit any. Additional call ups to you guys.
And then.
If there are the. You feel free to contact us with any questions you have. Contact us by email or by phone, even if we're not meeting.
Okay. Mark, were you?
Yeah, I I just had it. So there's a. There's a window in which a planning board member may call up an item and then should a planning member. Planning board member call up an item. Then a different clock starts ticking and and how long is that clock? For for when we actually have a must have a hearing.
I think it's sixty days if memory serves me.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Great. Thanks, everyone.
Any other? Questions or comments? Well, enjoy your recess.
Come back to everyone.
Thank you, you too.
This meeting is adjourned.
We want stories.